... provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act. The Asbury Park Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting by setting the notice of the time, date, location, and extent known, the agenda of this meeting to the Asbury Park Press, the new poster on January 27, 2023 via email. Copies of this notice has been placed at the administration building and board, district schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the city clerk on January 27, 2023. The Asbury Park District will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skills and the character to succeed in a diverse, evolving global society. Roll call, please.
Mr. Grillen?
Here.
Ms. Lozinski?
Here.
Dr. Penna?
Here.
Mr. Remmy? Ms. Ricks?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mr. Saunders? Ms. Allsby?
Here.
Ms. Cook?
Please rise for the flag salute.
Good evening, everyone. This evening, we have a few presentations to begin with. We're going to start with our student and staff recognition, then followed by our presentation on our CUSAC reporting, also our graduation report by Principal O'Neill and Mr. Paul Savoye, and followed by our HIB report by Dr. Howard Morris. So we'll begin with Dr. Schultz, who will represent Thurgood Marshall Elementary first.
Good evening, everyone. I am Dr. Schultz, the proud principal of Thurgood Marshall Elementary School, and tonight for our Student of the Month, it is my honor and privilege to present this award to a young gentleman who is a third grade student that has not only shown dedication and perseverance to his academics, he has a special interest in math, and also takes on a leadership role in his classroom. He is on his way to becoming a very fine young gentleman who is caring, nurturing, kind, and goes out of his way each day to help his peers, assist staff in our building, and he always makes sure to start the day with, "Hi, Dr. Schultz, how are you doing today?" along with his teachers and his classmates. So Mr. Xavier Othello, please come up and get your rightfully deserved award. And Mom, please come up and join us as well. Here's your award, and here is, like we talked about today, a backpack of your favorite things, robotics, and lots of math manipulatives.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations. Can I get my staff's stuff yet? And now for our Staff Member of the Month. I have had the privilege of working directly with this gentleman for years in the district through different buildings and different positions. When I say he is truly the backbone of Thurgood Marshall Elementary School, I mean it with every ounce of myself, enroller's principal, and of our staff. He has single-handedly received Staff of the Month nominations every month this year from his colleagues. Every compliment that we receive on behalf of our building for how beautiful it looks or how clean it is is solely because of him and his leadership and his team's hard work. He is someone that his colleagues admire for his tenacity and kindness to them, and he is always willing to give a helping hand, donate his time, and volunteer his services to support our students. So Mr. David Palat, our head custodian, please come up and accept your award. And we are presenting you with cards from every student in every class in our building. They thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Perry Medina, Martin Luther King Upper Elementary School.
All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Perry Medina, principal of the MLK Upper Elementary School, and our Student of the Month is Helensia Joseph. She is... Come on up, young lady, come on. You guys can represent. She is a leader in the school. She is smart. She gets wonderful grades, but most importantly, she is attentive, she is respectful, and she is growing into someone who will be the next leader either of our town, of the state, or even beyond. So congratulations, young lady. We are so proud of you. Great job. All right, so for our Staff Member of the Month, this gentleman comes to work every single day, gets his work done, no questions asked. He is someone that I actually look up to, that inspires me. He makes sure that our building is up and ready for the next day. Mr. Kenneth Purrier, please come up. Mr. Purrier has been an employee here in Asbury Park School District for some time. It is truly a privilege and an honor to present this to him. That must be wifey. Missed a check-in.
Ms. Thea Jackson Byers? From Bradley Elementary. The Bradley Elementary. I stand corrected.
At this... Oh, sorry. At this time, I would like to call up the teacher of the Bradley Elementary School Student of the Month, because he has like a special way of calling his students that only he can. Mr. Barry Seaman, give him a round of applause. When I tell you his students love it, they love it.
Thank you. I just want to say that the Student of the Month that we have, she just comes with a smile and joy every time she enters the building. She brings happiness to the classroom. She leads with quietness, thoughtfulness, and she just never shows off. I just love having her in the room, and everybody around her is better for it. So Bradley style, coming up here, Elsa Martinez Gonzalez. Yes, please, Mom and Dad come up too. Everybody else. Congratulations, Elsa.
So Elsa, we have some spirit wear for you. So on those dress down days, this is for you. Mom and Dad, we could not do this without you, so we have some spirit wear for you. Would you please wear this with pride and say that my child goes to the Bradley Elementary School? And Mom, if it wasn't for you, we wouldn't have this beautiful Elsa, so this is for you. We leave you your flowers while you can smell them. Now, the Bradley Elementary School Staff Member of the Month. What can I say? The Bradley Elementary School Staff Member of the Month, I could not honestly get away with giving him flowers. There's no way I could. He gives us the warm and fuzzies, but I wouldn't be able to give him flowers. Our Staff Member of the Month, when I say he's more than just a security officer, he is my right-hand man. I wouldn't know what to do without him. He's here when the students come, and he's here when the students leave. He's the first here, the first to leave. He, technology, just how you saw a couple of seconds ago, something happened with technology. He's back there helping. He has, wears so many hats. None other than say, I want to say thank you to Officer Ruben Bray Bradley Elementary School. Very much so deserved. He'll put the music on in a heartbeat for me, anything I ask. So, also, Officer Bray, I know that the way to your heart is through your stomach. Officer Bray, he loves his air fryer at his house, so we thought that he should have one here at schoolwide, so he can warm up his meals. And of course, we have some spirit wear. He loves his air fryer. Thank you, Officer Bray.
Congratulations. Ms. Bridget O'Neill, Asbury Park High School.
Tonight, we are recognizing a seventh grade student who is here with us tonight. He has been recognized by his ELL teacher for his commitment to his learning. He is somebody who has a positive attitude all of the time. He is constantly trying to get better. He meets all of our school expectations and really just embodies what it means to be a scholar and to be respectful and a part of the community in his school. So congratulations to Renix Millian in seventh grade. Dad, if you want to come up as well? Ms. Spanark will come up too. We're also recognizing a 12th grade student who is not here with us tonight, but he is? Great. He just snuck in. He is here. Nope, this is over there, but I'll grab it. We are recognizing a 12th grade student who has had some really incredible accomplishments this year. He is one of the students that I met first when I came to Asbury Park this summer. He's on National Honor Society. He volunteers for absolutely everything this summer. On the first couple of days of school, he was there every morning early to help me organize and hand out schedules. He has also been accepted to over 25 colleges for next year, which is really impressive. Elijah acts as if it is no big thing, and he just puts in the work that he needs to achieve. I appreciate you so much. Congratulations, Elijah Drake, come on up. Mom, you can come up as well. Okay, last but not least, is the High School Staff Member of the Month. This staff member has been guiding the ship at Asbury Park High School for a long time. She has been instrumental in keeping us on track, making sure that everybody is laser-focused on what the number one priority should be, which is our students. When I came on board, we got into this little ritual of talking about fastballs and softballs and helping navigate all the things that come up on a daily basis at the high school. She has relationships that go back to her days as a kindergarten teacher, and she still leverages those relationships now to get some of our struggling high schoolers to their goal of graduation. I feel that we can count on her for anything, and she's really here to make Asbury Park a better place that serves our students. I'm inspired by her every day. Ms. Nancy Estrada, our Instruction Coach.
Congratulations to all of our students and staff members of the month. We'll be moving into our first presentation by Mr. Everin Ruiz, Director of CNI.
Yeah, I use it, it's cool.
I don't know what it is about microphones, but I'm a big fan, I don't know why. So as Mr. Ruiz gets himself set up, he'll be reviewing over the NJ DOE equivalency information review, which is something that we need to do for our upcoming CUSAC this sprint.
All right, good evening, everyone. All right, my name is Edgar Ruiz, Director of Curriculum and Instruction. I'm going to do a really brief presentation. As part of a requirement for CUSAC, we have to present to the board any changes that come up. The state decided this year that because we didn't test in 2019, 2019, 2020, and 2021, that they did not have enough data to fill out a portion of the CUSAC, and decided to give every district the opportunity to use an equivalency measure in order to use that as the information that they were going to use to give us our CUSAC score in two of our indicators. I think it's seven and eight, which is ELA and mathematics. So pretty much the explanation from the state and how we have applied the equivalency waiver is that we're requesting to use a substitute instructional program for indicators four and five, I'm sorry, because there was no data for 1819, 1920, because there was no NJSLA data, because no student tested in the state of New Jersey at the time. What benchmark, they allow the districts to utilize a benchmark that's an equivalency. The state recommended several different benchmarks that they recognize. Lincoln was the number one on the list of all the benchmarks that they felt was very much tied to NJSLA. So we're going to use Lincoln. Most districts are using the Lincoln Benchmark as well. I kind of gave an explanation, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but basically, this provides a break. The reason that we use Lincoln is because it's tied to NJSLA, and it provides the breakdown of all the students and subgroups. That's a very important part for the state. They want to see how subgroups are doing. Here, just a quick slide I put together with the help of my consultant at Lincoln, just to kind of show how the state would use this kind of data. I didn't bring all the, I can bring you a Lincoln data sheet with 80-something pages of everything broken down by every subgroup there is, but I just wanted to bring something basic up here, kind of show you from year to year how the data can be used. We kind of put this together by grade level, and you can see grade levels here on the side for 21, 23, 22, excuse me, 21, 22, and then 22, 23. And one of the things I want to focus on is we've already taken Forms A and B. This year, we haven't taken Form C. We wanted to compare it against Form A and B last year, and this is the kind of data that we can pull. And so some of the things we try to notice is how much growth the students made over the course from last year to this year. You can see there's a little more growth, but also students started a little higher this year than they did last year. So that's a nice indicator for us, is to kind of see how students are moving. So they may start, they might have started at 25 last year, and this year they start at 35. That's a great, you may not see a growth, but then you also see that they started better than the year before. So these are the kinds of things that we look at and why an equivalency is acceptable. So what does that mean for us? Well, that means last time we had CUSAC, this is what we got, this is the scores that we earned in ELA and math and growth points, 4.8 and 4.2, for a total of 28.1. Again, that's just a subset, because there's also science, there's also graduation rate, there's a whole bunch of other things, and then there's a bunch of other indicators, including what we do in the business office and so forth, that are part of the cumulative score of CUSAC. But this is just the part that pertains to the Office of Curriculum and Instruction. So for ELA and math, because we didn't test NJSLA those two years, they decided to give us an equivalency, and this is what we will get. We will get the seven point, the total score of 7.5, which is the most points you can get, and that will bring us up about six points at 34.1. Okay? And then I'm opening the floor to any questions. Yes?
If we were using the standard, what is the difference?
The difference is we don't have any data for NJSLA. That's the only difference, because we didn't test for two years during the pandemic.
So this, so we would test in Lincoln?
We would test in Lincoln throughout the pandemic. We did it remotely as well.
So the Lincoln gave us our alternative to, because we didn't test any other?
That is correct. There are no further questions?
So how?
Yes.
Really quick, the 34.1, so that's... My math is awful. What is that? That's six points higher?
That's a six point higher, yes.
So six points, six points higher than the year before?
That is correct.
And then out of...
Not the year before, the last time we took...
The last time we took...
Three years ago, possibly. We take it every three years, a CUSAC.
It looks like over here, it says that the percentage of students with positive growth...
Yes.
So in 21 to 22, it was 57% of the students, and now it's 68% of the students that had some sort of positive growth? I'm looking at English 1, I'm just looking at...
You're looking at English, what grade level?
I guess grade nine?
Grade nine, okay, so if I was, well, there's no grade nine, there's English 1, right? Which is grade nine, very good, yes. Yeah, so this is telling us of the growth, of the students that grew, in 21, 22, we have 57% that grew, and they grew about 12 points, 12 percentage points in 21, 22. In 22, 23, 68% of the students showed positive growth, and they, their score was an average of 14 points of positive growth.
So it's a 10% increase?
That is correct.
And then in English 2, it says 0% growth?
Right.
Last time, and this time it was 65% showed positive growth?
Yes.
It's not bad.
Yeah. So there's a lot of positive things you could gain from it, and also, what happens is from Form A to Form C, there's a major jump. Usually between Form A and B, it's a little closer. Between Form B and C, you see a major jump, because that's where the majority of teaching and learning takes place between January, February, March, April, and May. There's not, there's not that many breaks. We don't have Christmas, we don't have Thanksgiving. We're really focused on teaching and learning in those months.
My other, my other question is, if the state decided to make this change, equivalently, all the other districts didn't standardize tests either?
That's correct.
So right now, why didn't this make it, you know, this is what the new standard is going to be until we get back into where we're going? Why isn't an alternative?
The alternative is because we don't, the way the CUSAC is calculated, it takes two years of NJSLA data, and there, no school district in the state of New Jersey has two years of back-to-back NJSLA data. And so every district has been allowed to use this equivalency. We're not the only ones. I think every district is actually taking advantage of the equivalency to do, to do this waiver. So because we don't have two years now, next year, we will have two years, because we took NJSLA last year, and we'll be taking it this year. So that will give the two years, so any school that goes under CUSAC review next year will have the two years of data and possibly not go through this equivalency portion.
Thank you, Mr. Ruiz.
Thank you, guys. Have a great day.
Next, we'll have our presentation on our graduation by High School Principal Bridget O'Neill and Mr. Paul Savoye, our Systems Data Analyst.
Good evening, everyone. For those of you who don't know me, I am Paul Savoye. I manage the student database and do all of our state reporting here.
I'm Bridget O'Neill. I am the high school principal.
So this evening, we have just a brief presentation. As we're heading toward the end of the year, we're thinking about graduation, and the high school's been working very hard on looking at graduation. So we figured we would present where we stand and how the state actually looks at graduation rate in terms of where Asbury Park is. So every high school in New Jersey gets a graduation rate. The state uses a whole bunch of different metrics to calculate graduation rate. The main ones being the number of students who progressed through our high school for four years, and how many of them actually meet the graduation deadline of four years. The state also calculates a five and a six-year graduation rate, so they do give students the leverage of a little bit of extra time. So we receive a rate every year for graduation. As we look at our data, starting in 2021, the state began using two different graduation rates. We have a state graduation rate, and we have a federal graduation rate. The state graduation rate is based upon, the biggest difference really between the two has to do with special ed students. The state of New Jersey says if a student has an IEP, they get two extra years to graduate high school. They are federally allowed to be in school until they're 21. So the state of New Jersey does not count those students in our graduation rate. The federal government says those students get counted into our graduation rate. So a student with an IEP, when they reach their fourth year of high school, the federal government considers them to be a non-graduated student, so they still count as being part of that cohort, but they are considered off-track. They have two more years to complete, and they will be counted in our six-year graduation rate once they reach the end. The state uses what's called an adjusted cohort. So basically, when a student enters ninth grade, the first time we report that they have come into ninth grade in our high school, they are assigned a cohort. That cohort starts a clock for four years. So for four years, they're tracked as whatever that fourth-year cohort was. So right now, we're looking at students who came into high school, doesn't matter whether it was here in Asbury Park or somewhere else, they are in the cohort of 2023. Several things happen to students during the time that they're in high school. They can leave the high school, transfer somewhere else. We're responsible for reporting that they've transferred somewhere else and telling the state where they've gone. Or students can be received from other high schools or from out of the country, assigned to the cohort. This next slide kind of shows you what that looks like. So this says that our original cohort, so let's say for 2023, the original cohort was 100 students. They entered, four students transferred into the district during that four years, so the cohort became 104 students. At the same time, there were two students who transferred out. They went to other high schools, they were reported by their other school districts, so the cohort was adjusted to 102 students. The next portion, over here, shows students that were not tracked or for various other reasons, perhaps they dropped out of school, or we did not verify where they went. So you can see there's three students here that were not verified, there are two students here that dropped out, doesn't change the size of the cohort. It's still 102. Dropout rate, students can leave high school for several reasons. New Jersey only requires you to be in a high school until you are the age of 16, and then you have the right to drop out of school. So there's various reasons. It could be an unknown reason, you could be pursuing career. The state kind of gives us the leverage of saying this is the reason a student's leaving. It also gives us the ability to look at why students are leaving high school. And then we have unverified transfers, which can be a bit of a liability. So when a student leaves, we're responsible to know where they went. Did they go to another high school? Did they leave the country? If we do not track those students down at the end of their cohort, they will be considered a dropout. They'll be counted into our dropout rate.
So in August of '22, we looked at the data that we currently had of whatever our graduation rate has been and what our adjusted cohort looked like, so that me coming in as principal, I had an understanding of what we needed to attack to try to increase those numbers and also set up programs to support us in making sure that we didn't have more students in their 12th grade year dropout. So with Mr. Savoye and the school counselors, we did an audit of all 11th and 12th graders, where we looked at their transcripts, we looked at their IEPs, we looked at their history with us, from when they came into the district to when they left. We identified that we have two special education students who are out of district that will be continuing until, until they're 21. So that does count as a six-year graduation rate versus the four. 45% of all Asbury Park High School students at the start of this school year were off-track for graduation in terms of their credit accrual, which meant that we needed to develop a credit recovery program that could start immediately. It started in August and is still happening until today. We had 16 students at the start of this 12th grade school year who had previously dropped out of high school before they reached 12th grade. These are students who have dropped out any time from ninth grade through current. 16 students that the project became really verifying where they are, did they drop out? Could we reengage them in school? And then we have 25, we had 25 students at the start of the year who were at risk of dropout when you look at the different criteria, chronic absenteeism, credit accrual, not having a permanent house. Those students, we had 25 right off the bat when we came into the school year. From there, we kind of came up with a three-pronged approach. So working with the central office team, myself, our school counselors, child study team, we tried to develop ways to put these students into different groups so that we could put interventions into place. We wanted to understand our adjusted graduation rate, we wanted to... Um, we wanted to understand our adjusted graduation rate, we wanted to set up a system for individual case management where we were looking critically at truancy. Credit recovery and then putting at-risk services into place. And then we created a pathways to graduation program that launched in January for our most credit-deficient seniors. The adjusted graduation rate is what Mr. Savoye talked about. So we are tracking and monitoring students who have previously withdrawn and to our knowledge have not re-enrolled in any school. Um, to date, we have tracked down three, which in fifteen is a pretty high number. Um, we are working with the community, we are working with staff members across the district to try to understand, did that student move to North Carolina? Did that student move to Neptune at a point? Um, there's a little glitch in the state system that oftentimes students who have two last names or a hyphenated last name. Register in a different iteration of that last name and you may not be able to pick them up. So we've been doing a lot of legwork, calling to other schools, um, again, reaching out to community partners and trying to identify who those students are. We have been doing individualized case management, so between the school counselor, CST, and our attendance officer, they have been constantly auditing our progress. And creating interventions that we can put into place, we're monitoring how students are accruing credits, um, all of the time. So we're checking at interims, we're checking at marking periods, those of our kids who are in credit recovery programs, we get a report every single week on how they're doing. So that we change course as it's needed. We have about forty students in the twelfth-grade class who have extremely specific individualized plans set up that have different exceptions to attendance. Or we have them working with a tutor after school, whatever it was that they specifically needed. Um, we've been really creative with monitoring truancy, uh, students, truancy does not, it's not enforced for students over sixteen. So you lose a lot of the opportunity of going through the court system to, um, pursue families and students who have chronic absenteeism. But we have been working very closely with Mr. Whedon and Mr. Ward to understand which of our s, senior students have younger siblings who may also have truancy issues. And how we can kind of, um, get support in, in getting those families comprehensive services. We also have just been putting therapy into place, we have, um, community partners that have been linking our students to different jobs. A lot of our students were working during the day, which was a reason that they weren't coming to school. So we've also been identifying people who were, will employ our students after school or on the weekend at the same rates that they, you know, were earning previously. And then the last piece has been the creation to the pathways to graduation program, Dr. Adams spoke about this a little bit, um, in our last meeting. But we launched a program in January that is serving forty students total. It is a wraparound dropout prevention program that we've created in partnership with New Jersey Virtual School, which is through, um, MOESC, through MoESC. It offers us self-paced credit recovery taught with New Jersey certified teachers. Our students can take up to five classes of credit recovery at a time and as soon as they finish a class, we can add another class. So every student in that program needs more than seven classes to graduate, students typically take five to six classes a year. So it allows us to really move it forward and this group of forty students was on a five or six-year graduation pathway. And we have put seventeen of them to date on a four-year path, which we're making progress every day, but we have seventeen of them. That should a hundred percent graduate within their four-year window. Um, we are having constant family, school, and community communication. Uh, the students who are in this program have bi-weekly meetings where we are pulling in their stakeholders, whether that's a coach, whether it's their old Pop Warner coach, whether it's their boss. Um, to keep everybody engaged and on track, we are going to homes to have those meetings, we're having those meetings in school, we're having them virtually. Um, just making sure that those students are really engaged in their own progress. So when we're looking at where we stand right now, we have a hundred and thirty-four students who are in our overall cohort. Not all of those students come to Asbury Park High School, this is every twelfth grader that we are responsible for. So if you have a student who's at a vocational school, um, if we have students who are special education students who attend out of district, they're counted in that number. We have a hundred and twenty-seven that started as reported in our group this year, in our adjusted cohort. Fifteen of those, as I said, were previous dropouts, people that had dropped out, um, prior to this school year. We saw a chunk of dropouts in this cohort during the COVID-nineteen pandemic, so the students that never came back to school following the pandemic. And we have eight new dropouts that we have had since the start of this school year. Some of those are students that never came to school this school year, that we are still trying to verify where they are, are they attending somewhere else? We have three students that we identified that we will have an appeal for, so it'll bring our number down because they are enrolled somewhere else or they have a different circumstance. And we identified two of those students who are continuing. We have seventeen who are on track in the pathways to graduation program. We have three students in this cohort who graduated early, they finished their, one finished their coursework in October. Uh, one finished soon after that and the other actually finished at the end of last year, he graduated an entire year early. And we have sixty-seven students currently enrolled in the high school who are completely on track, they have passed all three marking periods of their required courses. So we're in a pretty good space right now, we've made a lot of progress, um, we will continue to make progress. I think that this year, understanding where we stand, we'll be able to duplicate that same process for our eleventh graders who are rising to twelfth grade. And really understand on the back end what we need to do to support students, but also what we need to do to keep track of where our students go and making sure that our adjusted rate is accurate. Thank you all, that was it, any questions that you have for either of us?
My first question is, uh, what are three of the reasons why, uh, you see a significant dropout?
So the dropout rate here is interesting because there are students who are dropping out prior to twelfth grade. Um, I would say that that's not typical of a school district and I think one of our areas of growth is really identifying when students leave us. Where they're going and making sure that we're properly coding it. Um, these are not all scenarios where students actually dropped out of school, it may be that they moved, we didn't know where they go. And therefore, we have to use a dropout code because you, you can't use a transfer code if we don't have any verification that that child transferred. Um, you know, I think we do still face some challenges as a district in terms of chronic absenteeism and, and keeping our students in school. School being an important, um, means for them, of our students this year have experienced difficulty, there are students who are a little bit older. You know, eighteen or nineteen years old, who are primary supporters of their family and I think that that's something just as a community that we need to continue to battle. Um, it's economic necessity that we've had some students leave the school this year. Um, and, and identifying that sooner, right? Because if we have a student who needs help in that way, or a family that need, needs help in that way, what services do we have in district to help the family and keep the student engaged in the way that we need to? So, right now, we're in a little bit of a reactive space, but I think we're getting to a more proactive space.
Well, that, that follows up with another question as to what are the three top, uh, wraparound services that we need to add to the district?
So we do have a lot of services that we utilize, we have a partnership with the YMCA, um, that provides clinical counseling all across the district from kindergarten up through twelfth grade. In the high school, we have The Spot, which is a partnership, um, through the VNA that provides clinical counseling right in our building. Um, and then we also have a partnership with KYDS, which has been really successful for the building. And then I would say that this program that we've created through Pathways is a really strong academic intervention. Um, it's a model that some districts in our area are using and it has high levels of success. Eighty-five percent of students complete their programs with success within the timeframe, which I think is a very positive outlook, especially knowing that it's critical students.
So the three early graduate, graduates, I know this may sound dumb, but this counts towards the four-year graduation rate?
Yes, it does, yeah.
Okay, and then, um. The identified appeals, is that, is that number, three identified appeals? Uh, is that, uh, in addition to the drop, the dropouts? Or is that out of the dropouts, there's three appeals?
Good question, so basically, once a student is, is deemed as being a dropout and the state has kind of picked that student up and said, hey, that student dropped out of school. Our only means of changing that is by doing an appeal. Um, so in the fall, there's about six or eight weeks in the fall where we as a district are able to provide some documentation to the state and say, the student's actually not a dropout. Here's the documentation that supports that they moved someplace else, we never tracked them, you never picked them up, they left the state of New Jersey, whatever the case is. Um, so those three students are students that we a hundred percent will be able to file appeals for at this point, um, so fifteen will drop to twelve.
I just, I, I would just like to say that I'm impressed with, um, what the administration, the high school, and all the counselors and the staff, teachers, et cetera, are doing. To make sure that when a cohort starts freshman year, they're there to finish. And I'm impressed because I haven't seen this much of, um, uh, what would you, process to make sure you follow the kids all through high school. And ma, and make sure that all the things they need are there so they graduate, it's very important and, and I just want to commend everybody for all the hard work.
Um, just real quickly, uh, this is also, um, from the issue that we dealt with coming into this academic year. Um, we really began looking at and doing an analysis of, uh, transcript audits back in July. Uh, which led to our concern over the eligibility aspect, which led to identifying and doing further triage in terms of the academic support. As well as making sure we have the credibility to sustain our programs and offerings, whether they were credit recovery or buyback. Uh, for, um, for truancy in students that had, uh, failed courses. Because the last thing that we wanted to do was to have any of our, uh, programs and offerings to students to be scrutinized for the lack of. Uh, credibility that they offered toward a high school diploma issued by Asbury Park. Um, and so that was the main thing we wanted to support and substantiate what we were offering in terms of our credit recovery. As well as our buyback offers, as well as our graduation rate being true and authentic under any level of scrutiny. Um, now, or once we implemented this process moving forward. Because the main thing that we wanted to do was regardless of the actual number, we wanted to make sure that we were implementing a clear and effective. Uh, process and procedure to correct any past or prior issues that led to, um, any level of criticism. Of our students graduating from Asbury Park High School.
Another question.
Excuse me?
Okay.
It is very impressive and it is, congratulations to the, um, progress that you guys are making. I was just wondering, with a program like this, is it something that could be, um, issued in part of like the lower grades? Where, you know, you do have some children struggling to get to school in like the middle school and even in elementary. Is there a way that we can incorporate something like this where it, it's not just high school, we can like help them move in something where it's just like, you know?
So presently, we are doing a, uh, full truancy and attendance, um. I want to say, um, assessment, but a report, um, that the attendance officers, um, are working on in terms of. One of the things that we have had an issue with as a district is having the chronology of documentation to support. Long-term after individuals have, uh, departed. So if an individual had concerns over attendance from ten years ago, there's no, um, information related to that. Um, that we could say we had in a repository. So we are effectively creating those documents, for example, um, part of the truancy issue and the documentation. That Mr. Savoye talked about related to students is being able to pull those court documents, be able to pull that information related to, um, um, dropout. So we're actually in the process of putting all of that information together for all of our students in the district. Um, Mr. Whedon and Mr. Ward are presently working on that, um, report. Um, and so we will have that information, we will then be able to have. A full analysis of what services we've provided, we will tie that into our intervention and referral service program, which is INRS. Which is a leg of support which, uh, is run at the school level, which is overseen at the sec, at the central office level. So each of these things that we talked about, even in terms of the graduation reporting, is part of us. Making sure we have clear and effective processes and procedures as a district, so regardless, under any level of scrutiny. Um, it passes the test, as well as we can go back and look at and collect data in order to say what is working. Where do we need to target our services and resources? As well as be able to say, this is where we're spending our financial resources to support students in terms of KYDS. In terms of other, um, services that we provide to students, whether it's in special services with, I, I mean, IEP students or out of district. So those are all tied into this report, but into also the attendance and truancy report, as well as even Mr., um, Ruiz's report. And that's the reason why they're all sort of interlinked, because at the end of the day, we want to make sure that. Truancy has always been a, a major struggle for our district, as well as our credit recovery and buyback programs have always been a concern. Um, even going back, I was just mentioning to Mr. Weiss, if we look back at the old SRA process for the gradu, for students graduating. That was an alternate process to award students high school diplomas. Um, so that came under great scrutiny in terms of the number of students that were graduating through that process. Um, and so the last thing that we really want to do is to not have our students have pride in the high school diploma. That they are issued here by Asbury Park, but we also want to make sure that we are triaging our students who have those early struggles. In terms of truancy and academic issues through our INRS process, as well as monitoring it, um, systemically.
Thank you, oh, so what you're saying is monitoring truancy in elementary and middle school. Will set them up for a more successful, um, the high school, once they reach high school for a, a better grad, graduation rate?
Yes, I think a lot of our students in this community, um, that we have dealt with historically have had the notion that it's okay to be late. Right, and so it's, it's become habitual. I think one of the things that has been really the culture that we have done overall from not only the students, but as well as the culture of the staff. Is to make sure that we, um, have promoted that attendance is important. Um, that we look at on our district webpage, ninety-five, our goal, one of our goals is ninety-five percent attendance. So we're looking to not only, um, address truancy, not from just the student aspect, from, but from the entire district cultures aspect. Of attendance and truancy, because attendance matters. Um, and it's, uh, I believe it's a lifelong habit that if done properly for our students, when they go into the workforce. Or they become self-employed, that they just understand that, um, your presence is definitely, and your attendance and your tardiness is definitely an important aspect. Of you setting yourself up for success.
Uh, all right, I got a question though.
Okay.
Um, I heard, uh, credit, credit buyback program, a credit repair program like a couple times, so I just wanted to know, what does that entail? Is that something that's happening when the student already completed the course, the class? Or is that something being implemented while they're still taking the class?
So both, um, we have credit recovery that's happening within a student's school day. Um, we have students who are in the pathways program who are doing credit recovery and then that's also something that we do in the summer, um, as well as after school. So this year, the real move was to make it so that it was happening at all those different times. So that if you were somebody who was rapidly becoming critical, we're not waiting till summer to do your credit recovery then, we're trying to figure out how we fit it in. And really trying to get students to stay after school and/or do a hybrid program where they can do some of it with us in person, they can do some of it online. Because it piles up and that's really overwhelming to our students, that's something they talk to me about all the time, so trying to handle it as it comes.
Okay, thank you, so they're actually doing their work type of thing?
Yes, I have all the proof for you, I've got, they're afraid of my spreadsheet, you should see when I pull it up and I'm like. You're not in the green, you're in the yellow and forget it, if you get to the red, your mom's gonna come right now. So we're monitoring it and it's also teaching that skill that, right, anybody can check your work and your word is your word, but there's proof in what you're doing. So we've been, we've been modeling for them that being online and being engaged with what you're supposed to be doing is a whole different thing than passing. Right, it's, it's, it's both, it's monitoring your time, managing your time, but also passing your classes. And I think that that soft skill, right, is also something we try to build in high school. And I, I think of the small wins this year, that might be my biggest small win, is that we're starting to understand that as a student body.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Uh, Ms. O'Neal and Mr. Savoye, thank you.
All right, hold on, I have, I have, Mel's a question for you. Um, and it's off of, uh, Ms. Bay's question is, when can we see, uh, a report? Probably by next September as to all the datas, we're in a reactionary, how, how far can we get ahead of this? And one of the things that we look at is, I think in the ninth grade, by six months in, if we know all this data. And we're protectively, uh, setting our children up for success, uh, we should know this and how we're going forward. So, uh, by September, do you think we should be online to get an idea of what we're looking at? Tardiness from your report and how quickly are we looking at the kids in ninth, tenth, and elevens right now? tenth, and eleventh right now?
So that's ongoing in terms of the data analysis. We won't really be able to look at our ninth graders in terms of where they are until the end of the year, in terms of what courses they would need, and that's really tied into as we look at scheduling. So let's say a ninth grader attends classes, maybe non-credit for two, failed two, so that student can go to summer school for two classes, that means that student is not actually moving into 10th grade. If we look at that in terms of just that one student, that may be a student on the deficiency side, but we may have students that are in the dream program that are excelling and exceeding. Just a few weeks ago, we had our ninth grade students pass at, I believe, 36% over the state average. So we have not only students at both ends of the spectrum, but I can't sit here prematurely and say to you what that percentage is going to look like. As we triage from 12th grade down, as we've done this year, the goal is to make sure that our most credit deficient students in terms of graduation are addressed first. That becomes a priority. As we look at students who have the actual long-term opportunity to retake classes, that's where we look at it from the freshman's standpoint. High school is a very different dynamic when we're looking at schedule structures and schedule development based upon courses passed and courses that need to be retaken. So it is not a singular view on me giving you a spreadsheet that says 45% of our students are here, 65% of our students are here, 35% of our students are here. We won't really be able to tell that determination until we build the schedule based upon summer completion, course passings, attendance. So there are a lot of variables in that. So it's not apples to oranges when, when people say, well, I want the data, right? We can give you numbers, but I think this is a clear indication of understanding just how graduation rates and graduation cohorts are developed and calculated. So in most districts that don't have this small number, when we talk about three students being able to put in an appeal for it, that's a huge number for our population. When we look at the sporadic nature of students, you know, not knowing where they are, and the hectic nature of how the state collects that data, we would love to know where those additional students are. However, we still have to work with the numbers that we have. So nothing is inflated, right? And again, to me, it goes back to the process of it standing up against any level of scrutiny from anyone inside our organization or outside our organization, and saying that we now have a very true graduation rate, we have a very true, authentic, and tried and tested credit recovery and graduation program to make sure that all of our students are on the track towards graduation and are giving the resources and services needed to successfully either be in the fifth-year cohort, a four-year cohort, or a six-year cohort. And so that has been the process by which we've, we've done. Not many schools are going to be able to tell you that they can give you a projection on, in September, what their current rate is. We could tell you a percentage like we did in terms of how many of our students are on target towards graduation. That is the most accurate we can tell you, because then it is in real time with students taking courses, passing assessments, attending class in school. So that's where we are with this being real-time, fluid, but honest and transparent. Yes, Dr. Penn?
I just wanted to echo Ms. Lizinski and say this is a really big step in the right direction, and is being done in many districts like you were talking about, so really great work with this, and I think it's going to do wonders down the road, for sure.
Can I just ask one last question? I meant to ask the high school principal, and I apologize. I was curious, to the three students who graduated early, were they individuals who excelled academically, or were they individuals who had pretty much aged out and were given a some sort of option?
So to graduate in New Jersey, you need 120 credits. Our students on average are registered for between 40 and 45 a year. So early graduation is entirely possible if you're passing your classes and kind of moving forward. One of those students was just extremely motivated, graduated a year early. The other came to us from another school. She had, you know, maybe 15 credits that she needed, she was able to complete them early. And then we had a student who has some life circumstances outside and was really accelerating his pathway so he could take care of his own family, so all self-motivated cases. We could see more students graduate early, it's not uncommon.
I've got one, one other question, just based on the numbers back there. So when, when we figure out the graduation rate, we would use the 134 number, or the 134 number, right? So that right there, I mean, just doing, doing whatever math, it's, it's at around like 80, 81%, the graduation rate, right? I mean, that's pretty good in terms of, I mean, it's consistent with what, what we've been saying, now it's just verified, right?
Yeah, and the past few years, we've been between 74 and 82.
Right.
So it would put us in, it would put us above where we are right now. I think that will end in, in that one, but we're definitely higher than we were three years ago. And the students who are outside of our district, so the 134 to 127, those students are all on track for graduation, so they look out towards us.
Right. This is just more, it's got a blue check mark now, it's verified, right? So I just want to remind folks that only, it was only a decade ago that we had the worst graduation rate in the state at 48, 49%, right? So, I mean, kudos to everybody that worked so hard to get this graduation rate up, so it's a huge accomplishment.
And to be very clear, this will, this process that we have implemented should yield greater than 80-plus percent in terms of our graduation rate with the services, with the monitoring, with the systems that we have in place. Dr. Howard Morris?
So as required by the Department of Education, I have to provide a report twice a year with regard to the SSDS report, which stands for the Student Safety Data System Report. We do it twice a year. The first reporting, report period is September through December, and this is for September through December of 2022. So before I start, there are two categories that you'll see in this report. There's the incidents category and the other category. The incidents category includes incidents that are reporting on violence, vandalism, weapons, and substance abuse. And also HIB, you'll see a category in regard to that. And the other includes any other incident that led to a student being removed from the school. So for this year, from September to December of 2022, the high school reported 24 incidents, and again, that's the violence, vandalism, and other, and substance abuse and weapons. And the other were 45 incidents. We had one incident of HIB. MLK, we had four incidents, two other, zero HIB. Bradley, we had zero, all across the board. And Thurgood Marshall, we had zero incidents, one other, and one, zero, zero HIB. So I did a, so I did a comparison. So I looked at 2021, 2022 school year, period one, and I compared that with the period one 2022, 2023 school year. And so it, first, the incidents remained the same for the Asbury Park High School. So last year, we had 24 incidents, this year, we had 24 incidents, so the trend was steady. Other incidents, we went from 30 in 2021 to 45, so there was an increase of 15 incidents. And we went from zero HIB in 2021 to 2022 to one incident of this year. Upper Elementary, we had a negative two trend. We went from six incidents last year to four this year. We went from one other incident to two this year, and across the board for HIB, we had zero incidents for period one. Bradley Elementary, we had zero last year, zero this year for all of the categories. Thurgood Marshall, the same. And this is a three-year comparison, so if you look at period one from 2021, we all know that was COVID period, so zero across the board. Last year, the total incidents was 54 incidents, and we had 28 incidents, so we went down. Other incidents went from 32 to 47 incidents this year. HIB went from zero to one. So, any questions?
I just wanted to ask, when you, so that everybody, I'm clear, the high school includes the seventh and eighth grade, the statistics?
Yes, it does. This year, yes.
It would have been a little more, I think, informational to see it separated, because I'm sure it's reported separate, because seventh and eighth and...
No, it's actually not.
Together? It's all together?
Seventh to 12th.
Okay.
Yes.
What do you think, Dr. Howard, was the reasoning for the kind of increase in the, in the other category? Like, what did you see that was kind of?
You're talking about the high school?
Yeah, did something stand out to you, or something that, that why, why it went up like that in the other category?
So again, other can be leaving the school, anything within the code of conduct that requires to be put out. It could be a fight, it could be many reasons, and, you know, when you say 21, 22, that was kind of like the first year, the high break year that we came back, so the kids weren't in school full-time, all of them. So this year, you know, really, you have seventh and eighth, seventh, eighth included, and all the kids are back now. So, and across the state, you're going to see an increase in other. And particularly, you have more fights than you had previously. You know, again, we have KYDS, they're back now full-time, we didn't have them before. So now they're working to try to get our kids back on track, but there's more fights than there had been in the past, I can tell you that much.
I mean, it's not necessarily a bad thing in, in, in my eyes, because the fact that they're getting reported, like sometimes it's almost like things, when things don't get reported, that's, that's just as troubling too. So in a way, like seeing that they're getting reported is, is important too.
But across the board, the district, we understand, we want transparency, you know? If we're having some issues that we need to deal with, we report them and we deal with them. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Howard Morris. Madam President, that concludes all of my presentations for this evening.
Dr. Adams, one, one other thing I just wanted to reiterate from something that Mr. Ruiz said, and I think you mentioned it too, is that our average score was like over 30% higher than the, the state average with those, right?
That was on the ninth grade, the LA.
On the ninth grade, right. And we had something like a 72% passing rate. That's huge.
So...
Unless I'm, unless my math is dumb again, so.
No, I think the numbers and the data that we are often reporting is accurate. It is a reflection of the work of the staff. It is a reflection of the focus of our students. Monthly, you see and hear the positive aspects of our students being recognized, as well as our staff. You often, as well as during public comments, have concerns of students and families alike. Just one of the things on our agenda this evening, some of our students who came up last month about the law on public safety, two of those students have been accepted into the Summer Institute Law Program at Harvard University, which is on the agenda for us to provide the financial support for those students, and it's virtual. So we take, and as a superintendent, I take the academic opportunities that we provide here for our students very seriously, as well as recognizing the level of hard work and dedication that our staff are putting forward, contrary to any other narratives about us as a district. We have some very hardworking and dedicated students presented here this evening. One of our students, again, beating the odds, 25 college acceptances. Again, would walk past him in the street and not recognize, you know, just what that young man is capable of. So I think that we have a district full of students that are, as one book, an author would say, invisible because people refuse to see them. Our job and task is to make them very visible.
John, how's your battery life? Good? Okay. Just be able to utilize time. What we're going to do is, we're going to do the reports, but if you guys can keep them brief. Or we can skip over the reports, whatever you guys want to do. Because the reports are technically in the agenda, so.
Policy Committee has no update.
Athletics, we have three new hires, head baseball coach, head boys volleyball coach, assistant volleyball coach.
Finance, we had the budget hearing last Thursday, and the only other news, I'm sure everybody's read in the paper, that we received, well, supposed to receive some emergency stabilization of 5.6 million, but we'll see what happens and when that comes.
Is it 5.0 or 6.6?
Five.
Was it 5.0? Okay.
Ms. Rex? Anything, real quick?
I will make mine very brief, as Dr. Adams already discussed, number nine on the agenda, on the CNI agenda, about the two students who will be in the Howard, Harvard University Law Program, and Mr. Ruiz already discussed, I think it was number six, about the NJDOE Q-SAC report. So the most important thing then is that the Early Childhood Department in collaboration with Life Support Training at Jersey Shore University Medical Center is to conduct a head-saver first aid and CPR AED training session for the Thurgood Marshall and Bradley preschool. And that is for approximately 45 employees, that's $70 per person, not to exceed $3,150. And then we also have tutoring for students that require academic assistance who fall under the McKinney-Vento Act, and that is the act where our students who are deemed homeless will receive extra educational support. And I think that's about it. That's about as fast as I can go.
It's still going to be faster than me, Ms. Rex, so kudos.
Thank you.
I got a long one, it's, it's a lot. We've got a lot to do with buildings and ground, so I'll go as fast as I can. All right. So we had a couple of facility use requests, the district received a request from the Monmouth County Cotillion Committee to use the high school gym and auditorium on June 8th and 10th. They're requesting a wee fa- a wee favor, a fee waiver, see what happens when I go too fast? A fee waiver of $2,452. And then the Asbury Park Little League has provided a letter donating services, this is actually really cool, including, they're going to donate services including a new scoreboard, protective netting, picnic tables with umbrellas, and a re-graded infield. And they're asking... And they're asking the district to waive the $1,000 annual fee in lieu of these donations. So thank you to the Asbury Park Little League for, for all of that. That's fantastic. Architectural Services, the elevator project at M L K is nearing completion, thank goodness. The inspections have been scheduled for the end of March. Have they happened since we met, Jeff? No, right? Not yet.
They have not happened. The architect's been out with a punch list and they're scheduled for the end of this month. And the project is about a month ahead of time.
Great. Ahead of schedule, that's always good. The district's Phase Three ESER-funded project has a bid opening scheduled for this week. It was actually Tuesday. The project includes upgrades to the high school and the M L K media centers, the high school life skills room, the high school auditorium, and the science classrooms. Also, upgrades to the HVAC systems at our schools may require some temporary relocation of classrooms while work is being completed, so please, no rumors this time. All moves are coordinated with the building principal. Central office relocation and future use of the Barack Obama Building was discussed. And the administration has asked for an appraisal of the Barack Obama property and an update to the appraisal done on the maintenance shop. The committee discussed options for using and selling those parcels. So that's something that I just wanted to highlight because a lot of folks have been asking questions about both properties. Various projects include, well, the I T department continues to review options for a new cloud-based phone system. The current system utilizes a district-based servers that are almost obsolete. The I T staff received a new server to extend the current, the current storage capacity for the district's security camera system, and this will increase the number of days that video can be saved on the system. We also reviewed an old photo of the athletic fields at the high school. The photo shows a different configuration of fields. That'll be reviewed with the district architect. The committee discussed the installation of the, a multi-sport court system and the possibility of using a different kind of foundation to avoid cracking. I forget what it's called, the, the underneath part of the, of the court, what is it? It's like a silt-based thing in that the cement, even if it's poured or re-poured, it could crack. So it was suggested to look into like a latex modified thinset cement that could kind of be a little more flexible. The committee also reviewed an email received concerning trash receptacles around the high school and the lack of open gates. So, single gate access is open while the double gated access points do remain locked, but the single gate is open. Am I correct in that, right? Okay. And then finally, the committee asked for certain assurances that current improvement projects are being awarded under prevailing wage rules. All awarded contracts follow, I'll say this again, all awarded contracts follow state rules and regulations. And that came from a comment that we received questioning that. But all of the projects are under the prevailing wage rules. So that's my report. I did want to bring up, we talked a little bit more extensively about the maintenance building. And I guess what we'll do is, what we were planning on doing is to get an update to that appraisal, just to see if there was any, any difference from two years ago. I think two years ago, it was, what was it, Barbara?
1.8.
1.8 million dollars is what the maintenance building on, on Second Avenue was. And hopefully we'll get to selling that off soon. So, so we'll see what, what the update to the appraisal comes up with, to be continued.
Great. Thank you, Joe. At this time, we're going to switch over to the open, sorry, public participation. Just out of respect for everyone, just please keep it at the three-minute mark. At this time, I'll open up.
My name is Alfreda Clancy. I work at Asbury Park High School. I work at, I live at 65 Steiner, Neptune City. And Madam President, how are you? My question is, last month, we had a meeting and our superintendent said, when they get out of jail. I need to understand, what did that represent? They will have, what is it? What, what are we doing now? What's the word? Cosma? The new program, when they get out of jail, they will have their own business? I need to understand what he's meant by that.
If, if on YouTube, Facebook, he said it, I'm asking. Because if that's the case, I need to know where our children dead. I feel like that was a possibility there today. That, that is a possibility. Go back and look at it, if I'm lost, if I'm helping, if I'm lost, if I'm helping, please.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll look into it.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Angel Camas, bilingual ESL educator in Asbury Park for over 40 years. Happy New Year, first time I get to see you. I'm here to translate for this lady because she has own concerns. Thank you. She's from the high school and she's here to express concern that Ms. Holmes has been moved from the high school to the middle school. And she would like to see Ms. Holmes back in the high school because her child is very attached to her.
That is a personnel matter, which we cannot discuss at this moment.
I apologize.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, that's a personnel matter, which we cannot discuss.
That's, that's what she wanted to say.
The administration heard your concern, will take it under advisement.
Thank you.
I am Hosea Ariola. I am a student at Asbury Park High School. I am a student of Ms. Homer's. I'm just really sad that she has been moved to the middle school. And as my friend Plato and all of my friends in my class, we want her back. And it's really emotional because she's, she hasn't been there and now she's transferred to the middle school. And we just miss her a lot.
Good evening, Madam President. I'm here to speak today on, well, I actually have a lot of things, but I'm gonna stick to just one at this moment. So, a HIB report was given about the Asbury Park School District. However, my concern when it comes to the HIB is that you have HIB specialists in your district that don't understand what a HIB is. So, I was specifically told on the phone by the HIB specialist at Martin Luther King Upper Elementary School that a certain situation that my daughter endured did not fall under a HIB category because it was not done on race, gender, religion, or equality, when that is only one of the criterias which constitutes a HIB. There are seven criterias under HIB that constitutes a HIB. So if you're reporting HIBs, how can you report them accurately if you have specialists who do not understand what a HIB is? Also, this same specialist told me that if I wanted a complaint filed, that I could have went to the Asbury Park School District to file the HIB complaint myself, which as a regular parent of the Asbury Park School District, if their child was going through something of that nature, how would they know that they have to go to the website to form, to do a HIB complaint? Where to find the form for the HIB complaint? And also, when I did find the HIB complaint form, it is out of date as it still has Sancho Gray as the superintendent of the school on that form. So that is one of the problems that I have with the HIB. Also, the other problem that I want to speak on here is documentation within this district. There are several forms that I have requested regarding my daughter's I E P that I have still yet to receive because there is no documentation on those services that she has received. So if you were audited, how would you even have proof that my daughter received those services? Because I don't have any documentation stating that she's receiving them. Yes, I have I E P that says that she's supposed to receive them, but we also know that she hasn't been receiving them from other instances or meetings that we've had. But there's no proof that she's receiving them. There's no reports on how she's standing in receiving those services or anything of the sort that I could be given, you know, regarding her services. So documentation and HIB is just the two things that my three minutes will allow me to speak on today.
Name is Beverly Lyons. I am a resident of 1701 Ocean Avenue here in Asbury Park. I have been blessed to hear the progress that's happening and has been recorded. I would like to, I know I shouldn't, Madam President, ask a question, but let me make a statement. In regards to our special ed populace that we have, my concern, it may be in place, but I don't know, if there is a special ed chapter for the parents, and if so, is it advertised so that the parents that have concern about services for their children can come and access whatever resources you have in place? I understand that in the classroom, there are those formats that are used for our babies, pardon expression, babies, but that's what they are to me. But I'd like to know, if it is in place, could it be publicized or information sent to the families to let them know they do have access besides going out of the district to other advocacy groups to get help? When we have it in-house, then we should be able to access it and help with these parents that are really stressed. And that's with every district, I'm sure, and every component of a district, there is stress. But I'm looking at our special ed populace and having access to these meetings, if we do have that component here. If so, please, let our parents know so that they can come. And yes, they probably will be irate, and they probably will be wound up, but at least we can say, I can refer them to our district to say we have something in place for them. Thank you.
At this time, I'll close public participation.
Madam President, Ms. Lyons, Ms. Lau, who is our Director of Special Services, has been hosting those meetings. I'll make sure that we do advertise it as well, but I'll let Ms. Lau just speak on it briefly in terms of the last meeting and when your next meeting is as well.
So we do have a special education parent advisory group. It does meet quarterly. Our most recent meeting was at the beginning of this month, and we did publicize it on the website, on our Instagram, Twitter, and Facebook. Flyers went out in English, Spanish, and Haitian Creole. If you have ideas of how we can engage more of our parents to join us for these meetings, I would love to talk to you offline. All right? Thank you.
You're welcome, Ms. Lyons. We did miss you this morning. I hope you're health as well at our Student Advisory Committee. The concern, I echo and share your concerns, Ms. Foster, over what you mentioned at the microphone. I am in the process of making sure that there is extreme clarity regarding the H I B reporting, as well as those incidents related to the situation that you were informed of. So I am directly and immediately involved in making sure that that process is being addressed. So I just wanted to let you know that regarding that, the other issues, I will make sure that we take that up with our special services as well as the possible case manager and/or that CST team related to those issues. But our Director of Special Services heard your concerns and is acutely aware of the situation as well.
Madam President, I had one, one favor to ask, that maybe, just so we're all kind of in the loop with the, the meetings with the special education, the quarterly meetings, would it be possible to have Ms. Lau kind of just do a brief report out every quarter, like when, when you do meet, like at the next, at the subsequent meeting, just so it's kind of put on record, people can see it on YouTube, people, and everybody on the board is, is aware of, of kind of what happens?
Mr. Garillo, if you look at your weekly updates that I send to the board every week, those notifications are to the board in terms of the different, by department occurrences, meetings, and I guess overflows and highlights. And so, those reports, again, we've had a sidebar agreement in terms of those areas related to the special services as well as other areas. So I would say those, that information is open to the public in terms of parents participating. So what those findings are, what those things that are discussed is really allowing and aligning to the expectations and criterias of special services. And Ms. Lau keeps the agendas and those things are very much accessible. So-
I don't think a lot of folks, I mean, not to interrupt, but I don't think a lot of folks know that they're accessible. So like, either we, I know we're, we're doing changes to the website, thank goodness, but if there may be a way to kind of have the same stuff that we get, you know, as a board, just so it's more public-facing, I think it's, it just makes it a lot easier for parents.
You're provided as a board member, much more internal documentation and internal information that is not for public necessary consumption due to the confidential nature and your role and responsibility as board members and the oversight in terms of the governance that you are provided. In terms of the instructional and the day-to-day operations, which as a superintendent is my primary responsibility, those fall within my delegation and responsibilities to Ms. Lau to oversee. The information that is gathered from those meetings is given a synopsis in my report to the board to give you an overview of where we stand with certain situations and different, you know, different occurrences. So I think that that's a very fine line that we, we walk in terms of not only discussing, because there are certain regulations and things of that nature, not only with- because there are certain regulations and things of that nature, not only with special services, but within any of the dynamics related to any of the directors, with the exception of CNI, that don't deal with personnel. When we talk about even the HIB reporting, giving in any more detail would be giving with just the sheer numbers, identifying markers of who those individuals are, given any small cursory investigation. So, we want to be very mindful that in this public setting, we want to be careful about revealing too many things that are not embargoed to protect the identity of our students and/or staffs. So, I just want to make sure that's very clear.
Could I have a motion for items 12A and B as well as item 13? Any questions, comments? Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
Ms. Cook? Mr. Grillo? Dr. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
On 2, A, B, and C abstaining.
We're looking at just the minutes on the calendar for next year.
Oh, okay. Oh, I agree. Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Saunders?
Ms. Alsby? Yes.
Thank you.
I would ask for a consent agenda on all items B1 through B5, number 1.
Did you want to separate any of the items or no?
No.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at this on my phone because my laptop died. Just give me a second.
It got rid of so strong. Yeah. That came out yesterday.
So, we have a motion for all items B1 through B5. Any questions, comments?
I had a question about B2, 2B, the reassignment from substitute security officer, from part-time security officer, reassigned to substitute security officer. I just wanted to get some clarity on what the difference is between the two. I mean, I see it says here be used on an at-call-as-needed basis, but especially when we're talking about security, I just wanted to get some clarity on that.
Part-time subs, uh, security officers typically work up to 20 hours on a regular schedule. Madam President? Are we ready? Okay, this is all items B1 to B5. Ms. Cook? Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Uh, yes, abstaining on B2 to ABC.
Dr. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Uh, abstaining on 2A, B, and C.
You're abstaining, yes, on all others?
Abstaining on all of them and...
He's abstaining, he said.
Abstaining.
Yes, we have a yes on all items except 2A, B, and C, which you're abstaining.
And 3, 3A, 31.
And you're abstaining on 3A? Thank you. Mr. Saunders? Ms. Alsby?
I am yes to everything, and I will be abstaining from page B2, number 2, A. A, B, and C.
Thank you, all items carry.
Wait, hold on. I want to change my vote for 2A. To, to no, to 2A.
So, 2A is no.
Yeah, for the, um, on B2?
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you. All items carry. Thank you.
Hey, Jeff, I'm going to change my vote on 2. It's just 2A and B. With 2C, there was a misunderstanding.
So, you're abstaining on 2A and B?
Yes.
And yes on C?
Yes, on C.
Great, thank you. Could I have a motion for all items C1, number 1, through C5, number 3? Moved by Ms. Cook. Could I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Alsby.
This is for his?
This is all items C1, number 1, through C5, number 3. Ms. Cook? Ms. Alsby?
Uh, C, what was that? C?
C1, number 1, through C5, number 3, on the blue pages.
On the blue page. Well, I, you know what? Already no.
And it's yes to everything, and I'm going to abstain from C5. C5, number 1. I apologize.
Thank you, Mr. Grillo.
Yes to everything except C5, number 1, that's a no.
Thank you, Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
Dr. Penna?
Yes, everything except for C5, number 1, that's a no.
Mr. Remy?
Yes to everything as well, except C5, number 1.
Ms. Ricks?
Yes to everything except C5, item 1, until I've had a chance to discuss it and close exec.
And you're abstaining from that item?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Rogers?
Everything but C5, number 1, that's a no.
And Mr. Saunders? It's C5, number 1, you're a no or an abstain. Thank you. All items carry except C5, number 1.
I'd like to just inform the board that I will be taking C5, number 1, under advisement.
What did she say?
What did she say?
Take it under advisement.
Under advisement.
What happened?
She said she's going to take C5, number 1, under advisement.
What does that mean?
Yeah, what is that?
All right, okay, we're going to make the motion to go on exec. So, whereas the Open Public Meeting Act allows for exclusion from discussion at the public portion of the meeting of certain matters as outlined below, whereas the Asbury Park Board of Education was to discuss such matters, made, and will make such decisions public once proper conclusion has been reached. Now, therefore, as it resolved that the Asbury Park Board of Education will hold a closed session, exec session, I'm sorry, on this date, March 23rd, 2023, at the Asbury Park, New Jersey, for the purposes outlined below, for litigation contact matters and client privileges.
And union grievances.
And union grievances. Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
So, ladies and gentlemen, the board will be retiring to close the executive session for approximately 45 minutes. It's anticipated that the board will not be taking any action in executive session. Any action that's taken will be done here in the public after the close of executive session. Thank you.
We did that already. We did that.
Sorry.
So, we just need a roll call now.
Roll call, please.
Thank you. Mr. Grillo?
Here.
Ms. Lozinski?
Here.
Dr. Penna?
Here.
Mr. Remy?
Here.
Ms. Ricks?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mr. Saunders?
Here.
Ms. Alsby?
Here.
Ms. Cook?
Here.
Madam President? I'd like to make a motion to revisit one of the items before. So, I'll make the motion and then someone else will second it. So, I make a motion that the Asbury Park Board of Education retains the services of Patrick Madden Esquire, a special counsel, to conduct an investigation of a personnel matter at the rate of $150 per hour. And make aware that this is not, sorry, not in addition, it's in replacement of current counsel. Thank you, Mr. Grillo. Yes, this is a motion to appoint a special counsel for the purposes of conducting an investigation only. It's a kind of a one-project, if you will, assignment. I make the...
So, motion to pass C5, number 1. Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
Dr. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Ms. Alsby?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I'd like to make the motion to deny the first grievance and to grant the second grievance that we heard in executive session tonight.
I would just suggest that it be done as two separate motions, just to have the record carried.
All right, nobody's seconded, so I'm pulling it back. And I'd like to motion to deny the first grievance presented by the APEA tonight in executive session.
Do we have a second, please? So, motion to deny grievance number 1. Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
Ms. Alsby?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Abstain.
Dr. Penna?
Abstain.
Mr. Remy?
No.
Ms. Ricks?
Abstain.
Mr. Rogers?
No.
Mr. Saunders?
No.
And Ms. Cook?
Motion to grant the second grievance.
I didn't, I didn't get a vote from Ms. Cook. No. Motion fails.
Motion to grant the second grievance heard in executive session by the APEA.
Could I have a second, please? Thank you, Ms. Alsby.
But, hold on. Change that. Yeah, yeah, we'll go back. Yes, seconded.
Right now, we have a failed motion for the grievance number 1, to deny that one. And the grievance currently, the motion currently on the table is to approve the second grievance. I have a motion from Ms. Lozinski and a second from Ms. Alsby. Questions, comments? Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
Ms. Alsby?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Abstain.
Dr. Penna?
Abstain.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Abstain.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Ms. Cook? Motion carries.
Yeah. On the first, on the first, I'd like to change my vote to abstain.
Thank you. Still fails.
I'd like to make a motion to close this meeting.
You know, one quick thing, and then we can leave.
Motion to close on the floor.
Motion to close this.
Did somebody, well, did somebody, did somebody second it?
Seconded.
No, I'm asking if somebody did second it.
It's in the meeting.
Seconded.
Sorry. To save it for next time.
Save it for next time.
Aye.